Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting, this business meeting of the Borough of Gettysburg for May 13th, 2024. I don't have any announcements, so I'd like to move directly to the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the April 22nd, 2024 monthly work session, the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters of employment, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance of current Borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. We need to approve the agenda and the minutes. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve the May 13th, 2024 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the second motion for the meeting, minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of the council meeting of April 8th, 2024, and the council work session on April 22nd, 2024, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the second motion for the meeting, minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of the council meeting of April 8th, 2024, and the council work session on April 22nd, 2024, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any mistakes, additions, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to turn the floor over now, if I may, to Mayor Freeling for a special presentation.
Yes, this is in for Larry Weigert's retirement. I have a mayor award proclamation. And also Larry and Renee, if you could please come forward and join me. Councilperson Chad Allen Carr sent his regrets that he couldn't be here tonight because he's having rehearsal for the Penguin. Larry, it's been a delight. Larry and I kind of grew up around each other in the ward. Okay. Whereas Larry Weigert began his service to the borough on September 8th, 1988, as code enforcement officer, also serving as part-time to full officer for the police department. Larry entered service as a full-time police officer with the Gettysburg Borough Police Department on December 7th, 2003. Larry was promoted to the rank of sergeant on September 13th, 2016, and retired from service on April 12th, 2024. And whereas during his tenure, he worked for four police chiefs and several interim police chiefs. Whereas in addition to his assigned duty, Larry served as special events coordinator for the Gettysburg Police Department. The parades. He coordinated parades first of all. Thank you, Larry. Okay.
Thank you.
How about paying attention to you? Okay. Whereas, from the outset, Larry gained the admiration of the officers and borough staff for his knowledge and devotion to the borough as a code enforcement officer and later as a member of the Gettysburg Police Department. And whereas, he has completed 35 and a half years of service to the borough, retiring as police sergeant. Therefore, I read it to you, Freeling. Mayor, do congratulate you, Larry, on completion of your tenure here, and call upon his peers and associates to thank him for a job well done and to wish him success in all of his future endeavors. So signed under my seal on this 13th day of May, 2024. Thank you, Larry.
This way, too. Nice job.
Thank you for running.
I would also add, in addition to all of those tasks, Larry also has served this borough for years on the fire department.
Served as chief, too, I think, right?
Yep. Your honor, that you have given us, the service you've given this community is invaluable. That there are people like you who will run in when some of us might run out is something we cherish, and I just really want to thank you for your service here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm all hopped up on cake and emotion. That takes us to the first public comment section for the evening. This first section is restricted to items that appear on tonight's agenda. We ask that people in the community, please use the podium. Limit yourself to five minutes. We need your name and your address of residence, please. If you have something to discuss, to make comment on that is not on the agenda, you can do that at the end of tonight's meeting. Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to current and old business. And Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of my report was provided electronically. The High Points, the Planning Commission will be meeting next Monday, the 20th. The Gettys Golf LLC project subdivision land development plan will be reviewed. Additionally, we received a subdivision application for the Spectacote A. I forgot to pronounce that incorrectly.
Spectra coat?
Yes. They are, that application will be presented and accepted at that meeting, reviewed and occurring in June. The zoning hearing board will be meeting on the 22nd. They will be discussing the Welcome Center project. Additionally, the, I guess, the Planning Commission will be having quite a few items on the agenda. I should go back to that. The, in particular, we're finalizing a few things with the draft zoning ordinance that should be provided to the public here shortly this week. Moving along, the sign ordinance has also been going through some reviews. We will be taking that to Harb on Wednesday, the, what is that, the 15th? We've had some meaningful discussion, and you're going to see some presented changes when it comes before you again, but we're getting there. Finally, again, well, not finally, the, in terms of other businesses, that wasn't on the report, we have, I've been working with the county. The Mercy House is going to go through a change of ownership, but they will be continuing with a similar use, just a different provider, making sure that the zoning for that project is permitted. It is in the Elm Street overlay, so it is a little tricky, but we were able to come to a understanding of how operations would occur, and there wouldn't be any real changes occurring. And then finally, the big one would be tonight's motion involving the library. This clearly has been before you for quite a while now. If there's any questions related to that, I'm here to assist with that. But in general, that ordinance, once we, once that, assuming it's been approved, then the library will be proceeding with their subdivision land development plan. So that concludes my comments.
Great. So it looks like we have a motion or two here. Would anybody care to make the first one?
I'll make a motion to enact ordinance number 1490-24 for the purpose of amending the text of the Gettysburg Borough zoning ordinance in order to add a library use as a principal use of land and buildings to be permitted by right in the INS-1 Institutional One zoning district of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Does anybody have any questions about that? All right. Just for the benefit of the public, I want to remind folks that this amendment is not council weighing in one way or the other on the idea of a library, perhaps one day moving to a new location. What this is, is an investigation into what uses are allowed in the institutional zone. I'll just read briefly what is currently allowed in the institutional zone. It's not a long list. Accessory buildings and uses customarily incidental to be below when located on the same lot. Emergency service stations, essential services, fraternities and sororities, municipal or government buildings and uses, nature preserves, no-impact home-based businesses, places of worship, public and private educational institutions and schools for academic instruction, any and all accessory activities and uses such as academic offices, public or private nonprofit park, playground, or recreation area, single-family detached dwellings, student housing, institutional and staff housing, and then by special exception, also cemeteries and conversion apartments. So the question here before us is, is library as a primary use in this institutional zone acceptable? Not, are you in favor of moving the library or not? So if there's no other discussion, we'll call the vote on that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. Now, we have, is there any questions for Mr. Whitmore before we move on? Anything you'd like to discuss? All right. Thank you, sir. That takes us to Ms. English.
Thank you. My report is in your folder. The manager's report didn't show some of the newer projects that are being reviewed by Harb because they came in after I submitted my manager's report. So we do have one, 28 Getty Space, being reviewed Wednesday, as well as 533 Steinware, which is the Mini Golf, and a accessory building at 444 Baltimore Street. The application for 452 Baltimore Street was withdrawn. So that just gives you a recent update for my information on my report. The Harb Awards Bankwood is going to be this Wednesday, so we would certainly invite all of the council members. We're having a little light refreshments at 5:45, and the awards will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and then our regular scheduled Harb meeting will be at 7:00 p.m. The grant is now open for our 904 recycling. It was supposed to be open on the 1st, but they had some technical difficulties, so it was supposed to open on the 11th for me to submit, so I'm hoping to get that in this week. We have a rain barrel class that's coming up on May 30th, so we do have a few more spots if anyone is interested in coming, or if any council members would like to attend. It's May 30th at 5:30 in Robbie's yard, the DPW yard, not his house. I'll go to Robbie's house. And we have a shred event coming up this Friday. Judy will probably provide a little more information on that. And we're prepping for our stormwater bills to go out with Freedom, and they should be out with hopefully no issues on July 1st. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Ms. English? Would anybody care to make the Harb motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on April 17th, 2024, and approve the grant of certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA 23-0081, major project, 148 to 150 West Middle Street, Made Clean LLC for the window replacement project that would restore the four front facade windows using wood, two over two divided lights, replace the remaining side and rear facade windows using one over one vinyl windows, and repair all wood window trims by replacing the black casings with wood trim that is white in color on the front elevations, and using composite or extruded PVC casings that is white in color in the side and rear elevations, as submitted in the application dated November 7th, 2023. COA-230003, major project, 615 York Street, Schmuck Lumber Company for the proposed facade renovation changes to the front of the structure, creating a new central retail entrance to the building that would modify the windows, doors, roof, ramp, and mason ray, as presented in the application dated April 4th, 2024.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any follow-up questions for Ms. English? All right. Thank you. Ms. Thistle.
Good evening. You all have my report. I have my ticket and permit comparisons there as usual. I would just like to note that the pay-by-phone on the graph there, you can see, has been going up as the cash is going down, so there are more people using the pay-by-phone app, which makes it a little easier on all of us for collection and counting, and time-wise, it saves us some time. The, I think we talked about this before, but the touchscreen doors were installed on the kiosks. There was a little few issues in the beginning, but I haven't had any complaints recently, and I think all the kinks are worked out, and I haven't heard good or bad, so that, I have heard that it's a little easier when I'm standing down there and do talk to people, but, and then we did lose some reserved spaces in the parking garage. One of the businesses found parking elsewhere, so, but other than that, do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Seems like we're having some nice numbers last month as well. Excellent.
I have a question separate from what you just reported on. I guess it's with respect to the pilot program. Is there data being collected on how that's going so far? I know we're just into the beginning of it.
Yeah, so I have only had two buses apply for that, and it was the buses, the company themselves were using that for the program. I've had no businesses reserving that. We do have all that data. It's in our United Public Safety System, so, and then we have been tracking that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. That takes us to Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. You all should have my report. Some highlights on my report, you may have seen today, we started pre-staging the hard closure blocks for the Memorial Day Parade. We'll continue to do so up till the Memorial Day Parade. And brush collection, brush collection for the borough residents this spring will be May 20th through May 23rd. We will be around town twice that week, collecting brush only, no leaves. And it is also posted on the website, and it should be in the paper, I think.
It was in Saturday's.
It was in Saturday's paper, yes. One more item, agility projects. The 20th of May, we'll be starting a bunch of agility projects all the way through the end of June. The end of June will be our agility project, where we will be rebuilding Court or Leighton Alley from Baltimore Street to Washington Street, and Gillian Alley from Water Street up to Railroad.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Claybaugh.
Good evening, council. You have a copy of my written report. I do have a couple of updates on it. First one's on the second page of my report. I give you a bit of an update on the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B-2 project. We have concluded the design phase. We're on to the bidding phase, as you know. The, I'll be providing a brief report on how we concluded the design phase, but the skinny is that we completed it basically right on budget. The budget for the design phase was $288,000. One of the caveats or the differences between the original estimate that I provided was that we were going to do all of Resource Alley, and of course, we reallocated some of the design funds from Resource Alley to doing the water line instead. So we were able to complete that, the water line design, within the budget that we initially anticipated for the project. So good news with that. We're on to the bidding, the bidding phase. Stay tuned over the next month or two here as we start developing some bidding specifications. As John said earlier, the Gettys Golf land development has been submitted. We completed that review. I'll be sending my letter to John tomorrow for that. And also, we have reviewed a revision to the Gettysburg Tour Center. That construction's pretty much done. There was a couple of things that they're cleaning up, some landscaping and some things, so I had correspondence with John on that as well, and we should be able to put that project to bed here pretty soon. And then, last but not least, the same thing with the Shippensburg Physical Therapy land development on Water Street. We had reviewed a revision to the lighting on the project. It's going to be insignificant from the layperson's view of the development, but we did review that and provided some input. I believe that is it, unless you have any questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. That takes us to Chief Glenny.
Good evening. You all have my report. I would like to point out the one crime that we really stressed in there this week or this month, and that was the breaking in of cars in the borough. And the reason I point that out is, first of all, I want to give the officers on duty kudos for a job well done, for catching that individual and then tying him back to several other cars in the borough. I bring this up just to say one more time for probably close to the 100th time, please secure your cars. Don't leave valuables in them. And if you see somebody that looks suspicious, call us and get down there. We'd much sooner be somewhere and not be needed and not be somewhere that we're needed. So I would just stress, lock your cars. And I know people say, well, they'll just break in, but then they're there longer, it gives us a chance to get there. So that's the one thing. The other thing I'd like to, I'd like to say is that, yes, Sunday, May 12th, was the beginning of Police Memorial Week. So we are in Police Memorial Week this week, and Wednesday, May 15th, is Peace Officer Memorial Day, which they have a, there's a big to-do in DC, and there's a police officer memorial wall, and they add names of those who paid the ultimate sacrifice on that day to the wall. So please thank your officers when you see them and let them know you appreciate them as you always do. The, I would also point out that the little shorter first paragraph in my report this week about, those numbers weren't provided from county this time because we're, they're switching over their CAD system, computerated dispatch system. So there's a lot of information that we used to get that we're not able to get. There's some information that we can get now that we weren't able to get before, and they're kind of working those things out. So hopefully, I can get back to putting all the information in that first paragraph that I did or I have for the last five years, but right now, it's just not available, and we're, we're working at getting it. We have the motion one here. I would like to, first of all, take a little time and personally thank Sergeant Weigert for his years of service, and it's, it's, it's not an easy task to get police officers supervisor and those things in this day and age, and I just really appreciate someone who can put 35 years in this line of work. And I want to congratulate him, and I wish him all the happiness and all, everything in his retirement. I don't know what else to say. I'd like to touch on two. One of the reasons I don't think I mentioned to council, this is kind of speaking towards the motion that's up here next. I think you're aware, but I'd like to bring up that in this country, we have what's called the Law Enforcement Officers Safety Act, short RIS-LIOSA, and it was passed in 2004, and it allows active, retired, and separated law enforcement officers who are separated in good standing to carry concealed firearms anywhere in the United States or any United States territory. For safety reasons, it doesn't provide arrest powers in those areas, but it allows officers to carry, and that's one of the reasons, I think, that a number of agencies gift like we're, like we're going to have in a resolution here. So I, that's all I have. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
I do. Sarah, would you please?
Is it about the motion?
Pardon?
Is it about the motion?
No, I was questioning, but go ahead, make the motion.
Yeah, if it is, we'll do that again. All right. Would anybody care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 051324-1, authorizing the transfer of a certain borough-owned police service weapon, serial number BECF928, with an estimated fair market value of $300 to retired Borough Police Officer Sergeant Larry Weigert, in honor of his more than 20 years of service as a full-time law enforcement officer upon his retirement from the Gettysburg Borough Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Thank you.
Of course.
Sarah, would you please put in the minutes that I, too, thank Sergeant Weigert for his years of service to the community, and as a firm believer that family members of those who serve are also deserving of our thanks. They also serve who stand in wait, as the military is over that. Concerning this motion, was the cost of this included in your budget underlying?
It was not.
And have you seen that there are other communities that do this? Would you label that as frequently or rarely?
I would say the agencies I've been associated with do it. The agency I retired from does it. When I was the chief in Colorado, we did it, and I know of other agencies. I wouldn't characterize it as frequently, but I wouldn't characterize it as rare.
And it's this motion, I'm a little bit concerned that this motion is setting a precedent that we will feel obligated to honor going forward, and speaking for future councils, maybe that is not something we want to do. This is my personal opinion in that I believe that in thanking for service, an appropriate gift would be his badge enclosed in a lovely shadow box frame instead of a firearm. That is my personal opinion. I am not anti-firearm. I have a concealed carry permit, and I'm not packing tonight. But I just feel we could come up with a gift that would be appropriate to show our thanks for his service, but was not a firearm.
If I may, I would also add that we did provide Sergeant Weigert with a shadow box with those accouterments that you spoke of.
You've given that to him?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a comment following my colleague, Mrs. Butterfield, and I, too, want to express my appreciation to Sergeant Weigert and to his wife Renee and their family. I actually have known Larry for over 25 years when he was a code enforcement officer, and I was the chief spokesperson at the college with the regulated rental unit ordinance. He kind of reminded me of that tonight, so we go way back. And I am really grateful for his 12 years of service as the chief of the fire department, in addition to his work on the streets and the police. This is the first time that the Gettysburg Police Department is trying to put together a gift like this for a retiring officer, and I just feel like we did not spend as much time maybe as I would have liked to have discussed it. We had one opportunity, and I, too, don't want to set a precedent at this point, and I will be voting against it, but I want to make it clear that it's not against Sergeant Weigert, because I do hold him in high regard, and so it's really a personal, it's a personal decision. Thank you.
I kind of can echo the same sentiments. I just think, for me, it's an odd precedent to set when we are working with a municipal budget and government. budget and government funds and taxpayer dollars. I really do, something about that doesn't sit well with me. This has nothing to do, of course, with Sergeant Wykert. I've heard wonderful things about him, and I grew up in this community. I've been here since he started working in the borough. But I do think it sets a dangerous precedent for us moving forward. We have to consider the fact that someday, none of us will be sitting here, and another Borough Council will, and they will have to decide whether that type of gift giving during retirement is equitable. And I don't know if we want to go down that road.
Any other discussion?
Personally, I don't have, I don't see an issue setting this precedent, and we're not necessarily saying that this is a precedent for all retired police officers. This is specific to Larry Wykert in the reading of this, and I think he's, of course, competent enough to receive and take care of such a gift.
Anything else? Okay. If there's no other comment, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three to three.
Yep.
Well, that places it squarely in the mayor's lap.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries with Mayor Freeling breaking the tie.
I don't think it's, may I make a comment?
Please.
I don't think it sets a precedent. Councils before this council have done things that you don't consider as a precedent and carry on. I think that's up to each council in each situation, and that's why we are elected by the people of the borough.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, and we could, if we wanted to, I suppose, codify when and how we would make this gift. You know, perhaps it's for command staff who have reached a certain number of years as Larry has and has been. That's something we can certainly revisit before it becomes an issue again if we like.
And also, Councilperson Wilson, I was in Garrett's Jewelers the other day. A gold watch cost $1,999, and that was in the estate section. I almost fell over.
Okay. Any further questions for the chief? All right, thank you, sir. That takes us to the Office of the Manager and Treasurer. Ms. Stull.
My report's in your packet's there, and I don't have anything else to add to that. There are a few motions that Charles will go over.
Any questions for Sarah before we move on? Mr. Gable.
In the general fund, in addition to my report, I'd highlight a couple of things on it. Revenue versus expense in Fund I is tracking very nicely through April 30th with just a $33,000 deficit, still typical for this time of year. So, revenue and expenses are tracking as planned in your fiscal year budget. Wanted to go over a couple of our fund accounts and the money in them. In the general fund, you'll see we just have under nine, or $1 million in emergency reserve, which is in line with your fund balance policy. In addition to that, we have just over 1.8 million in liquid cash for daily expenses, so we're in good position there. Capital Projects is doing very well. You can see what projects we have restricted funds for, so things like the Flap Grant Match, the Welcome Center Local Match, and the Interloop Phase B2B that the engineer just recently spoke about have all been restricted at the appropriate amounts that was authorized by council. Those funds are currently sitting in term accounts in Pliget, gaining a very nice interest rate at 5.41%. At the top of Fund 18, you'll see there's just over $45,000 between Pliget and ACMB. Those are funds for the one-time projects like upgrades to the security of this building, installation of new computers, workstations, those types of things. That's where those funds are being paid out of. In Capital Reserve Fund 30, you'll see there's over $870,000 remaining in that account between ACMB and Pliget. Those are reserved for capital projects, but has not yet been restricted by council. So, that's your, your fund that you can draw from when you want to identify other capital projects and restrict those funds. And then, in the ARPA Fund, Fund 96, 1.6 million still remains. We will begin to draw that down, beginning with the next pay cycle to support the salaries of staff as directed by the authorizing legislation. I'm going to set this up for just, I need a good page, too. Okay. Before I get into America 250, wanted to update council on our contract with COSIN. If remember, you authorized entry into an agreement with COSIN-O'Connor Public Strategies. It's a cost share between the borough, the municipal authority, and Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority. COSIN-O'Connor has already set up a meeting with Senator Casey's staff, and we had a virtual meeting with them, which is great. They're aware of our projects, they're aware of our initiatives, and where we are in those processes, and they're aware of the grants, fundings that we have applied for. Also, next week, we have a meeting in person with Senator Mastriano to discuss the same types of things. Bringing that up because I just wanted to let everyone know that that's starting to bear fruit in that we're not having grant awards yet, but we're already, we are at the table with those decision makers that can lead to that. And 782 days from today is July 4th, 2026. Why is that important? That is the 250th commemoration of the founding of the United States of America. The Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semiquincentennial America 250-50 PA, an affiliate of the America 250 Commission seated by Congress, was established by the Pennsylvania Legislature and the governor in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States, Pennsylvania's integral role in that event, and the impact of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. Why am I talking about this now? Because it is only 782 days away, which actually is just over two years. It's going to come quicker than most people realize. Adams County has ceded a local commission, so each county, all 67 counties in the state are encouraged to develop their local county commission. Adams County has done that, and the folks that I think we should highlight here are the, the members of that steering committee, Steve. So, the, the commission is led by Steve Nabata, the Adams County Administrator, Adams County Planning, Jenna Smith, Sherry Clayton-Williams, Adams County Planning, Carl Whitehill of Destination Gettysburg, Carl Petersak of Destination Gettysburg, Christopher Gwynn, Gettysburg National Military Park, Jill Sellers, Main Street Gettysburg, Charles Gabel, Borough manager of Gettysburg, Jacqueline White, Adams County Historical Society, and Trina Nye of the Gettysburg Foundation. That's the group that's been meeting for the last two years to begin the impetus to developing a program, and it's going to be a year-long program in 2026. There are several committees underneath the commission. The first is Civic Engagement Committee, and the chair of that is Jill Sellers, and council member Alicia Sanders has stepped up to assist Jill with development of programming for that committee. The Heritage Committee is chaired by Jackie White. The Events Committee is chaired by Charles Gabel. Fundraising Committee is chaired by Trina Nye, and the Marketing Committee is chaired by Carl Whitehill. So, while this is a Gettysburg Council Borough, Borough Council meeting, this is an Adams County initiative of which Gettysburg Borough will be playing a significant role. I'm saying this because I know this is on community media. I encourage everyone at Adams County to start thinking about how they would like to celebrate the year 2026. So, the State Commission will be coming to counties and asking what kind of programming and events they're going to be supporting and encouraging and promulgating throughout the entire year of 2026. There are several things that Adams County is already doing, which I think is far and above where other counties in the state currently are. 100 Nights of Taps, for example, is considered a signature event at the state level. So, the State Commission has already designated 100 Nights of Taps, so I'm highlighting that because just later this month, that 100-night ceremony begins at the Gettysburg National Military Park. So, whether you're in Biglerville, or Orangeville, or Littlestown, or Gettysburg Borough, I encourage folks to start thinking about what they would like to do to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the United States. But then, of course, we here in Adams County play an integral role, obviously, for the continuation of freedom as the Civil War seminal battle here. So, with that, I'll just stop talking and just thank you for allowing me to kind of put that on everyone's radar because it, it is going to come pretty quickly.
Mr. Gable, are they all the committees right there ending with Marketing Committee? Or do they go?
No, they, those are the committees. It doesn't mean they can't have more.
Okay, because I saw a couple holes that I thought, first, I thought the college, but I see that Aaron Allman and Jamie Yates are represented. I think the Adams County Library, I think the Seminary, and Lincoln Cemetery. I'd love to see those three organizations somehow be embedded in the committees.
Yeah, and maybe Jill during her report can, can highlight a couple of these things. So, I, it's important for these, we're not, we're not going to be able to go to approach all of these organizations and manage it that way. We, we want to put it on everyone's radar, and if there's something that those organizations would like to bring to our attention, we can certainly incorporate that into a larger organized county-wide event.
I'd hope so, yeah.
With that, my report is done.
All right. Would anybody care to make the motion for bills and payrolls?
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The MPA, sorry, Safe Streets and Roads Grant, please.
A motion to authorize Borough Manager Charles R. Gabel, MPA, to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets and Roads for all SS4A Grant Program in the amount of $150,000, and to commit local match dollars in the amount of the required 20% match of $30,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, shredding.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 051324-2, authorizing the disposition of certain identified records of various departments of the borough of Gettysburg in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Records Act and Municipal Records Manual consistent with the borough's intention to follow the schedules and procedures with the disposition of records as set forth therein pursuant to Gettysburg Borough Council Resolution Number 021020-4, adopted by the Borough Council on February 10th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to say, building what Deborah mentioned earlier, the shredding event coming up Friday is open to the public. A resident of Gettysburg does not need to pay anything. A non-resident will be asked to pay a small $3 a box. People should make a reservation. It will be handled exactly like our covered device events. People will sign up for a time in order not to back up traffic on Middle Street, and volunteers will take the documents, we hope, in a box, not a sack, dump it into the shredder, and the person will see that the shredder is grinding up their, their documents. To sign up for a time, they should go to the borough website, or they can call 337-0724 between 9:00 and 5:00 on a weekday. We already have several people signed up. It is an event that people feel they need to experience. It goes very smoothly, and we'll take pre-registration until, oh, 5:00 the day before, let's say, and that way, we can give our volunteers account of how many people might be coming through. People frequently ask what size boxes. I tell them if a refrigerator or a sofa came in the box, don't bring that one, it's too big. But other than that, there's no limit on the size nor the number.
All right, any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we have the pickup that we're donating. Anyone care to make that motion?
A motion to adopt Resolution Number 051324-3, authorizing the transfer of a certain borough-owned 1995 Ford motor vehicle VIN 1FTDF15Y2SN67483, with an estimated fair market value of $300 to the Gettysburg Borough Fire Department for the Fire Department's use for training purposes pursuant to the subsection 1201 of the Borough Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Just so everybody is aware of what the situation is here, this is a pickup truck owned by the borough that is no longer serviceable and has no value, and we are donating it for, to the fire department to, I don't know, blow it up or something, have fun with it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, we have an appointment to the HRC.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 051324-4, appointing Rachel Lesser as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Local Human Relations Commission to complete the remainder of a five-year term of office expiring on April 15th, 2028.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that Ms. Lesser is replacing Janelle Wirthsberger, who served for a full term and, and for personal reasons could not commit to the second term, and we thank Ms. Wirthsberger for her service and welcome Rachel Lesser to the HRC.
Indeed, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that takes us to our liaison reports, and we'll start with Ms. Sellers of Main Street Gettysburg.
Good evening. I'll have my report. I guess I'll start with America 250 PA. Let me make this up real quick. So, I'm kidding. So, the commission, like Charles said, we have been looking at things for about a couple of years now, and the committees are coming together. I certainly appreciate Ms. Sanders and Mr. Berger being involved in civic engagement as we start to identify what the, what that means, what that's going to look like. In particular, for that committee, for me, and where that's going to go is really engagement with our younger generations. How do we really teach them and take this opportunity? I don't know who remembers the 1976 other than me, I was younger than I am now. But, you know, it's a huge opportunity for them to really showcase what this nation means and really take a chance to, to highlight what civic engagement looks like from participation on a council to volunteering in your community and whatever that is, and how are we going to get that into our youth programs in our school? So, that's one example. The Marketing Committee through Destination Gettysburg is certainly in good hands, but we're looking at different opportunities, but we certainly want to hear from the community, and it is coming much faster than, than we realize. So, anyway, I just encourage anybody to reach out, ask questions, and if you, the two things that are going to be really paramount are probably getting involved in at some point events and sponsorships and things that, that make larger things happen, whether it's, we're talking about, you know, 4th of July 2026 or other things throughout that year. We're really hoping to be able to, that Gettysburg is going to be a showcase of why we should be celebrating the freedom and founding of our nation at 250 years old. So, okay, Gettysburg, welcome. So, okay, Gettysburg welcomes, there are lots of things going on there. So highlight a couple of things. One is, as, as Mr. Whitmore mentioned, we have modified the design, so the building will be ADA compliant. So we've gone, we've met with you and did that. I think that's a great step in the right direction, especially for the longevity and use of that building long-term, because it's going to last for a very long time as we intend it to be celebrated, maybe on the, the next major anniversary of our country. I'm also pleased to announce the receipt of the Hoffman Grant. So the Hoffman Trust generously granted us $11,500. That will help us pay for the external relocation of the utilities. So that'll happen later this season, but every, you know, certainly every private foundation grant that helps this provides tax relief for this particular project, and I'm very grateful for the Hoffman Trust, for their, for their trust in us and, and this public project. So we will keep you posted on that. Lots of partnerships happen with Main Street Gettysburg. From the Ground Up is one of my favorites. You've heard me talk about these amazing people. This is in its, wow, it's 25th year this year, I'm very proud to say. And one of the challenges it has is we're trying to get younger volunteers, so new generations, like I mentioned with the civic engagement, but volunteer opportunities with younger people. So Earth Day presented a really awesome opportunity, so we got together with some Gettysburg College students and did a major cleanup day in the Elm Street District. Was really excited to put those two groups together, and it worked out really well, and I think we're going to be able to do some other partnership, partnership days again. American Battlefield Trust was here at the end of April, just really excited to see, you know, 450 or more people downtown staying here, taking advantage of the activities despite the rain and all the things that came with that weekend, but it was good to see. If you haven't heard, Gettysburg now has a film commission. That announcement was made a couple weeks ago, so Beau Brinkman and Chris Webb have organized to have a film commission here in Gettysburg, and we're going to see what doors that might open for economic development and other projects to come, creative projects to come here. Destination Gettysburg, I will announce tomorrow, we're going to be a meeting at the Fire Hall, and we're going to be doing a, an emergency preparedness session. It's kind of a work session inviting employees and managers and other, kind of front desk personnel to listen to presentations from the Police Department, from the Parking Department, from the Fire Department, to, so if they have an emergency in their hotel, their restaurant, their retail shop, their, wherever they may be, that they know kind of the first steps to take. So we can really be on, on the front end of, of the needs of our visitors or, or patrons, or our local patrons. And last bit of good news is, I learned yesterday, not yesterday, sorry, Friday, that the Department of Community and Economic Development has awarded a $25,000 grant, so we get to do the Elm Street Revitalization Plan. So we will be going forward with that very soon. So that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Great, thank you all.
Mr. Carr couldn't be with us tonight to talk about GARA, so we'll go to Mr. Berger with GMA.
So our GMA projects are moving along pretty nicely. Our new well, the Andrews Well, a draft of the land development plan is complete, and we expect that to be submitted to Cumberland Township Planning Commission for Action at the June meeting. The drawings and well permit application are being updated. On the sewer side, for Interceptor, drawings and all permits are in hand. The scope of the work for paving and stormwater repairs has been discussed with the Borough. So we're looking about all time to start that. Our office building, probably grand opening in June. Probably have our first meeting there. And after a lot of discussion, we, the board voted to contribute, contribute $1,000 for Cozen-O'Connor for our partnership with the Borough and Stormwater.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, we bid.
At the bid meeting, Borough Manager Gabel and Planning and zoning director Whitmore attended and spoke on issues that were of interest to the group, focusing largely on signage and trash contracts and trash hauling companies. I thought it was very beneficial, and I'm, I'm going to suggest that we do this, that bid does this on a regular basis of having, having guests from the Borough, because I thought it was very beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Freeling, the Adams County Boroughs Association.
The next meeting is, gosh, let me get my months right, May 20th, and it's going to be at the Adams County Emergency Center on Green Martha Lane, and Nina Kippler is now the head of it. She replaced Ron Harris, who was Mayor of Carol Wildland, but she is now head of it. I think she's York Springs. And I would like to stress this, I have seen beauty at these meetings. It's not just limited to me. Charles, you have attended some, and if anybody else would like to come, they're very informative, and they're taking a new approach of a roundtable discussion. So instead of re-upending the will, we can ask each other, how do you handle this? These are ideas we would like to discuss as a group and see how other boroughs are handling it. I think it'd be a great idea, so I just wanted to throw that out there. And it's an hour, it's a half an hour early, which I think is much better. 7:00 is just a little too late, so it's at 6:30.
Mrs. Butterfield, COG.
The last meeting was the 24th of April. Our next one is the 23rd of this month, of May. I serve on the Collaborative Subcommittee, and we're continuing with the survey concerning cybersecurity for various organizations in town. COG also welcomes visitors, drop-ins, the public. You do not have to be a certified member. And like I say, the next one of those meetings will be the 23rd of May.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lawson, HAPPY.
HAPPY met last Tuesday. Mr. Claybaugh reported on the Gettysburg Inner Loop, so I won't repeat that. HAPPY is recruiting new members. Unlike some of our other liaison reports here, HAPPY is not one of our authorities, boards, or commissions. So we do actively recruit people who have an interest in bicycling, walking, hiking, trails connecting these, the Gettysburg Inner Loop. So if anyone is interested in serving on HAPPY, I'd encourage you to reach out to Sarah Kipp, who's the president of the HAPPY Board. We have recruited two new members, one from Littlestown, which we're pleased because we found a connect trail down there as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, ACTPO.
Yes, we met on the 24th of April. We will meet again the 22nd of this month. ACTPO is putting out an air quality study that they're inviting public comment to take place, and one can do public comment on that by going to ACTPO's website, or going to Adams County's website, and then choosing TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. Will take you to that survey.
All right, thank you. The Trail Feasibility Study, next exciting chapter.
Nothing to regret.
Nothing to regret, all right, thank you. Did you have anything to add on recycling?
Yes, our contact person, our main contact person at Waste Management for Recycling, Patrick Kerity, is leaving, and he, our contact person will now be Mike Fagan of Waste Management. And we've worked with Mike in the past on recycling issues. He's a very congenial man and easy to work with, so I look forward to that. Because of those changes, and because we have new council people who've not met our Waste Management people, I'll set up one of the regular meetings that we have every few months. We meet in this room for a light lunch, and the staff is invited to ask questions of the Waste Management people, and public members also come and question them. We do not grill them. We question them and come away with some good information.
All right, thank you. Members should have found the fire and EMS reports in their folders. Elected officials' comments. Does anybody have anything they would like to say?
I do. I'll be attending the PSAB Networking Conference, June 2 through 5. Last time I attended, it was at Hershey, it is again at Hershey, and I'll be supplying all of my colleagues with Hershey bars after the conference. So be happy I'm, I'm going. One other thing, instead of waiting for a public comment, there's someone in the audience I'd like to be introduced, my friend Erica Duffy of the Adams County Library System. Would you please make an introduction of the lady to your left?
I would love to, thank you. This is Miranda Weiser, and she's returning back to the area to be our new executive director for the Adams County Library, and we really are thrilled to have her. I'm glad that you were able to meet her today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will be attending tomorrow's Emergency Preparedness for Tourism with Chief
Lenny, and I think Jill, you'll be there. Also, it's been proclamation time, more are coming up. I did a motorcycle safety and awareness for the Borough with ABATE people, and we also had the Law Enforcement Appreciation Breakfast for Fallen Officers, it was well-attended. I was also at a targeted violence with, at Gettysburg College, and Borough Manager Gabel was there, and I just gave an introductory walk in the Gettysburg, and this is why we need to look at targeted violence, meaning people, all of us, I'm a target. And it's just like groups, school bullying, school bombs, it's an issue, and they were trying to address it, and it was very informative. And also, domestic violence, that's targeted violence. So it was a very interesting thing. And then after that, I went down to Allen B. Roofing, hosted a Cinco de Mayo event that benefited the Y, the family of Allen B. Roofing. They said the Y was integral to them becoming part of this community by going there for recreation programs and things. So they gave a Cinco de Mayo event, and I have to say this, it rained that day. So they had it in a sterner built, and it was packed, and they're going to hold it every year, so I encourage you to go next year. It was a really wonderful thing. And tomorrow is our last meeting for, the 15th, no, let me get this right, no, probably two days, no, I'll read it out. The 15th is the last meeting for the Memorial Day Parade, it looks like everything's in place, and we're just going to be tying up some loose ends. The chief attended it two meetings ago.
Last meeting.
Last meeting, okay. And also, Chad Olling-Carr isn't here tonight, because he's at the rehearsal for Soaring with the Penguins, it's a community, it's a group that he has for disabled children to come involved in theater. And I would just like to say, it is this week, at the 17th, where is it? Matt?
It's at the Majestic.
There you go. We're going to pull us all together. And at 7:00 PM, go on the website, Gettysburg Community Theater, to see if tickets or contributions. I think this is wonderful. I plan on being there, and I'm really excited.
It's also on Saturday, the 18th, at 2:00 PM as well, and you can get tickets through GettysburgMajestic.org, not through the community theater website.
Thank you, but I just wanted to put that in. And what else is coming up? I'm working with the Pennsylvania Legislative Latino Caucus. They are having a program here on the 23rd, on immigration and the effect of rural communities. And I've contacted somebody from Unatus Manitos, who is Amelia Contreras, and she's going to go and sit on the roundtable.
All right, thank you. Any other elected officials' comments?
I plan to attend the Emergency Management Session tomorrow, too, sponsored by Main Street.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, that takes us back to public comment. This section is not reserved, two items on the agenda, but please do limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium, and we need your name and address of residence stated, please. Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive